Medical Laboratory Sciences class had a special lecture from Professor Susan Ferenczi from University of Richmond, who shares her expertise on hematology and share information about UP's medical laboratory and health science programs. And finally, we're excited to kick off our annual school-wide food drive. Last year, our school community came together to donate over 2,000 items to those in need. This year, we're aiming even higher and confident to we could be that number with everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you. And online, we have from IT, Mr. Geronimo Restrepo Munos.
Hello, everyone. I'm Geronimo Restrepo. I'm glad to be back. And I'm a senior representative from Fairchild Wheeler IT. During the beginning of our academic year, our graphic design teacher, Ms. McGonigal, and our music teacher, Mr. Tuzoli, won a grant, which will be used for our media center for new production resources and digital services. On October 22nd, we held our National Honor Society induction. Our National Honor Society is for students who embody scholarship, service, leadership, and character. During this night, students celebrated with friends and family this great honor. We have had several universities come and talk to our seniors about their programs. Along with colleges, our seniors have had the opportunity to visit Fairfield University to see their campus and learn about their programs and its paths. While our seniors are working hard on their capstone presentations and projects, they are also working with FAFSA specialists and counselor to help them with their application and understanding the different processes that applying for colleges and aid have. In addition, we're working to secure internships with local businesses so students can apply their classroom learning in real settings, with plans to launch the program in January. On November 12th at 6:30, which is in two days, Fairchild Wheeler will have a presentation for families regarding college and financial aid advice. Lastly, our journalism class has been hosting different capstone groups to broadcast their capstone ideas and surveys on our campus-wide morning show. That is Afrom Fairchild Wheeler. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see we have another student joining us, Deborah Graziano.
Good evening. I'm a junior at Bridgeport Military Academy. And due to our absence from the last meeting, these reports include comprehensive review of recent academic extracurricular and leadership activities at BMA. So the Connecticut Edside reports released last week reviewed that Bridgeport Military Academy BMA achieved a remarkable 5.4-point increase in its school accountability index, largest growth among high schools statewide. Between 2023 and 24, and 2024 and 25 school years, this significant gain propelled BMA from fifth place to fourth place within the Bridgeport District. Over the past three years, BMA have improved by 8.1 points, reflecting sustained commitment to academic excellency. Super good performance rose across all academics areas, with LA increasing by 6.8 points, math by 4.8, and science by 4.6. These gains are a result from school-wide efforts, including the maintenance of mandatory reading plus assignments last year and KEN Academy assignment this year, reinforcing foundation skills and personalized learning academic initiatives. October 8th, all students participated in college board testing. 11th and 12th graders took the SAT and PSAT. 9th and 10th graders completed the KEN Academy practice PSAT, initiating a data set to support future personalized learning through KEN. October 13th, all students were assigned KEN SAT math, 11th and 12th graders, or getting ready for SAT math, 9th and 10th graders, with the requirements to complete units every two or three weeks. Leadership and community engagement. October 9th, 14 cadets attended a leadership workshop hosted by the Connecticut Nation Guard, focusing on team building, discipline, and career pathway in public service. October 10th, the Navy NTRTC team proudly marched in the Columbus Day Parade, representing BMA with honor and precision. October 7th, BMA held its first monthly company competitions. Foxtrot Company first responders earned the top honor. Congratulations to all top owners. Congratulations to all cadets for their spirit participation, school spirit, and culture. October 27 and 31, BMA celebrated Spirit Week, fostering camaraderie and school pride through Team Jazz Day and student-led activities. Cultural enrichment. November 7th, 40 juniors and seniors attended a performance of "The Importance of Being Earnest" at the Westport Country Playhouse, enriching their understanding of classic literature and theatrical arts. Honoring tradition. Never been second. A dozen cadets attended the 250th birthday ball at Yale University, commemorating naval heritage and engagement with military leadership and peers from the state. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any more students online? Sam, do we have sound on YouTube? Next up, which should have been last up, is Roque.
Good evening, everyone. Christine Baptiste Perez. Maritza Estremera Jimenez.
Present.
Mr. William Medina.
Present.
Ms. Jennifer Perez.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Sokoliv.
Present.
Mr. Robert Traver. And Mr. Andrew Woodson. We got a call on.
Superintendent. Chair, I would like to put a special message out to the student board reps. I'm having an event on Friday, November 14th, and I'm going to invite you as my special guest to that event. Tim and Giancarlo will be providing additional information for you, working out how we will get you to it. The event's going to be at Housatonic. It is a BPS Unified Address by me to the community. I would love for you guys to join me. So that is the 14th at 10 o'clock at Housatonic, and more information is coming. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the chairperson's report. Ms. Perez is online. Ms. Perez, do you have anything for us?
I don't have any updates today, aside from just our convention coming up next week that we're going, that most of the board are attending. And some of the new board members will be attending a Cabe new board training in December. Other than that, I don't have anything else I need to share. Sorry, I'm trying to hold back a cough. I don't have anything else to share right now.
Thank you, manager. That brings us to committee. Yeah, I apologize. I'm skipping around the agenda. We are on number five, public comment after student representative reports. Thank you, Mr. Medina. Let's call a point over tonight. Apologize, everybody.
Good evening, Chair and Superintendent Schools and the board members and the boards that's online. My name is Jim Mazoros, a retired Board of Ed employee. I'm here to speak to March Schwartz, that's been a volunteer for the Bridgeport Public Schools for the past, well, it was 40 years with her, from Jefferson to Roosevelt to any other school and running the parents' groups. Some of your board members were with her at the time, Mr. Resto. So the family is asking, on May 30th of 2025, I turned 60. And there was a mention that some of the boards said they would like the new parent center at Housatonic Community College be named after March Schwartz. So I'm here today again, this is my second time. I didn't see when there was a next meeting to go in front of the committee. So I would like to get that because as a retired employee, I do not get Board of Ed emails anymore. I'm still part of the union, so I still represent the NAED people that are Board of Ed employees. I just don't see it. That's the policy for the Board of Ed. But if I can get an email, I can give you the email personally on the side, so I can get contact when there's a next meeting. To me or my two brothers and my family could be there also to show support of seeing if we could get the name from our mother and grandmother and great-grandchildren. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Jess Resto is on next.
Jess Resto, I'd like to start by congratulating those of you who won your election. I'm here tonight to raise a concern that I believe deserves attention. As elected officials entrusting with shaping educational environment for students, I feel strongly that this board should be held to the same standards as we expect staff and students. I'll begin with attendance. When a student consistently misses school, we intervene, we hold them accountable. I believe the same should be applied to our elected officials. If you cannot attend meetings regularly, the board should reconsider whether you should continue to hold your seat. And if you must attend, virtually, your camera should be on and you should be visible, just as students were expected to in their virtual classrooms. I also want to address the use of phones during meetings. It's disheartening to see board members distracted by their devices, excuse me, especially during public comment or when student reps are presenting. Those moments deserve your full attention. We deserve to be heard and respected. This isn't asking for much. It's about modeling the behavior we expect from staff and students. You have the power to set this tone. You can lead by example. Change begins with leadership, and let's show students what accountability, respect, and presence looks like, not just in words, but actions. I wish you all good luck because your success is our success. Thank you.
That is the end of public comment. I'll try to get the order corrected this time. We did the chairman's report out of order. So next up, we have number six. Thank you, Mr. Approval of minutes. Yes, thank you. Well, I'll get it right after this. Okay, we have approval of minutes dated October 27, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve? Any edits or corrections? I've got two on the, okay, I lost the first one. On the first page, there's a word missing. There's a letter missing and a one word. And on page 10, where are we? Paragraph 1, 2, 3. Paragraph 3, second sentence. He added, RFP should not be written a narrow way. It should be in such a narrow way. And there's a letter, letter L, missing on page one. I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's like in the first two paragraphs. And that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Any extensions? Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is number eight, committee reports and referrals. First up, we have finance. Madam Chair, do you have anything?
The Finance Committee met two weeks ago, and on today's agenda, we have two of the items. One is an extension of the CARBA program at Classical Studies, which is their extracurricular activities. And the other one is for EMT course at BMA, and those will be presented tonight. Our next finance committee meeting will be next week, November 19th, at 5:30 at City Hall. That's all I have.
Any referrals for finance? Yeah, Ms. Perez, I'll email you as well. I just want to refer some, just start coming up with some advocacy strategies going into the new session. Thank you, Mr. Medina. Ms. Estremera Jimenez.
I have a referral pertaining to the transportation fees and the cameras. We chatted about it a while back, that, you know, we should consider a potential renegotiation of the fees of people passing the buses when the stop sign is out for potential, not fully funding transportation busing, but funding at least somewhat. So we just wanted to refer that back to, back to the Finance Committee for consideration of looking at the contract and then also potential negotiation with the city.
Okay, could you please email that to Ms. Perez as well?
Yes, certainly.
And okay, next up is Instruction and Support Services. Mr. Traver is not with us this evening, but if anybody has referrals they want to put on the record, do so now and follow up with an email to Mr. Traver as well. Hearing none, policy and personnel. Hearing none, policy and personnel. Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Policy and personnel, I've not met since the last board meeting. Next meeting will be this coming Wednesday, November 12th. I did get a few referrals and don't think that we have to move forward from the last meeting. And, but also there's three policies in consideration related to school libraries. So we're going to be possibly speaking about those. I'll take any referrals. Ms. Marissa, you still have your hand up?
No, I have a new referral.
Good, Mr. Jimenez.
Okay. The new referral is about the discussion of a potential equity committee after some incidents happened with another school district. I thought it would be prudent for us to have a conversation about an equity committee, obviously not calling it that for funding reasons, but really just wanted to have a conversation about what that would look like.
Thank you. Be ready Wednesday.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, the Facilities Committee report, Ms. Perez.
The Facilities Committee met last week. We had an update from PMA in regards to workman's comp, workman's comp. And we had some updates for the decommissioning for BASIC and the facilities master plan. We're going to have a further discussion on that come December. And, and go into a lot more details about the facilities master plan and the, and basic decommissioning. So far, I know there, I didn't get to read the article, but I know that there was reports about break-ins in the school. We do have security in the building. So I do want to clarify that. There, there is a security guard posted in the building per, per Mr. Mr. Garcia said that at our last meeting. I didn't read the full articles. I don't want to go into detail about that, but I did see that. And so I just wanted to clarify that. That was discussed at our last Facilities Committee. So we're going to get a further update on that. And at the, at the next meeting on December, tend to be scheduled December 3rd. The first week of December.
Any referrals to facilities? Seeing none, we'll move on to the CAPE report. And I myself, nothing really to report on CAPE. We got the convention up and coming. And seeing as we had some turnover in the election. Need to ensure the new board members are reached out. I believe Ms. Perez reached out to the new board members and ensure that they either get their fees paid and what have you, so for them to be able to attend so they can hit the ground running if they are able. I know a short notice, so they might not be able to, but thank you.
Yes, I presented that. I think the chair has also presented that information to them. I know, talked to one of the new board members, and I think she is scheduled to attend December 9th new board member training, I think. I think I'm also going to do the leadership strand of that as well. So hopefully we'll have some interaction as well.
And now next up on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Avery, take it away. It's huge. Join me up there.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. This is my Superintendent Report. I'm, I'm excited to kind of talk a little bit about the data. The next generation accountability rating was just released by the state of Connecticut. And Ms. Hughes is going to accompany me and add value to my presentation. So thank you, Ms. Hughes, for joining me this, this, this evening. The next generation accountability category changed, changes this year. It was based on a three-year average. And usually what happens with the state accountability report, they, they base it on the three-year average of every school. And I'm going to go into the details of it. And it talks a little bit about the 12 indicators that is reported by the state and that is monitored by the state. So next slide. I'm, I'm very pleased to announce, you know, this, this evening is that we had a couple of schools, you know, Roosevelt, Barnum, Madison, and Harding was relieved from the turnaround list this year. And so I would like for everybody to give them a huge round of applause. It's awesome. And, and I say that because, because I think it's important that, you know, with all the things that happened, you know, the district, with the district, in the district over the last year, and for four schools to come off the accountability list for the great work that they're doing within their buildings is, is, is a monumental task. And so I wanted to also extend my congratulations to those principals, you know, for sure. The other change that didn't get them totally off of the accountability list, but Warren Harding was removed from a, from a targeted turnaround school to a focused school. And so we'll go into a little bit of that as well on how they made that task. In addition to that, BASIC was removed from the turnaround list for graduation rate. That means they improved accountability in the graduation area. And then unfortunately, we had one, one school, although they made progress last year, but their three-year average put them on the accountability list. And that's Edison is now a focused school intern, intern, removed from a focused school to a turnaround school. Ma, you want to add to that?
Testing, yeah. The one thing I do want to add is that we started off the year with 13 turnaround schools on the list, and we're ending up with 10. Shout out to principals and our teachers for the good, great work. Next slide.
So there are 13, there are 13 lowest performing school districts in Connecticut known as Alliance District.
Thirty-three.
I'm sorry, 33. You know, of the 33 districts, the lowest performing 10 districts are referred to opportunity, opportunity districts. So what, what they, what they have, they have 33 schools that are known as Alliance District. Then the top, the, the bottom 10 of those schools are opportunity districts. And, and usually what happens, the state provides additional support to those schools and to those, to those districts in the forms of monetary support, professional development, resources, and those types of things. Last year, Bridgeport ranked fifth from the lowest, and this year, we, we tied for fifth with Hartford, although, you know, we didn't really move overall, but we stayed in the middle. And so we're tied for fourth, fifth, or whatever you want to call that, I work for now.
This, what this slide shows is the 23, 24 Accountability Index, which the other, the other name that this goes by at the state is the State's Report Card. And it compares it to this current, the 24, 25 Accountability Index. And the final column is the change column. As you can see, for the most part, the schools from Waterbury to New London, that range is, is incremental. But this is where we pretty much have lived in the, the level four and level five for several, several years. As part of the opportunity district work, we meet with the State Department of Education three times a year to specifically focus on the progress, what our goals are for the year, what our focus has been. And then this year, they, they switched it up a bit, and they had us go to Harding High School. And they did a deep dive into Harding's goals. They looked at where is the school? How is it connected to the Alliance District grant? And then how is it, how, how are their needs connected to the school improvement grant?
And I think one of the things I want to emphasize is I think the state has kind of shifted their way of focusing on these schools because the state is also in a, in a, in a tying where they, they're also are being monitored and focused on regarding how the state of Connecticut is spending the money to support these, these, these schools. So again, it's, it, everything is being shifted a little bit on making sure that the dollars that are spent within schools are spent in a way that's going to be meaningful for academic progress for, for students. Next slide. On this slide, I would, I'd like to kind of, you know, emphasize that there are 12 indicators that make up the Accountability Index. And so Bridgeport has increased, you know, in small increments in ELA, math, science, and, and the overall achievement, which means, you know, students that are reduced lunch, reduced lunch students, MLL students, and student with disabilities. So again, we've increased in those areas, but we have so much more to do and so much more to advance on. Increases in ELA and math, also you'll see that on the chart as well. The multilingual language growth for literacy and oral proficiency is showcased on this slide as well. And also the increases in the percentage of students taking dual credit AP and CTE courses. So overall, what you see in green is advances, the, the little, the slight color, pink colors mean that we decreased in those areas. So overall, you know, we have to make sure that we stay focused in all 12 indicators in order to make sure that we, we stay in, get standings with the state.
Want to add anything to that? Uh, no, we're good.
All right, next slide. In this, in this slide, it, it really kind of looks at the schools within the districts that are performing at or above the indexes. It really gives you a comprehensive of, of the 23 schools, 23 of our 35 schools reporting had increased in the Accountability Indices for 23 and 24. So that's, and that's very important to look at that. So you look at the schools that has focus or turnaround by them, those are the schools that are, we really tried to make an emphasis to try to make sure that they improve. And so when you look at those schools, in addition to the schools that are not in school turnaround, there's been progress. And I think that's important for us. I know from the academic standpoint, it's important to making sure that we focus on tier-one instruction as we keep the focus of continuous improvement.
Ma, anything else? I just want to make note that of the, of the schools that's shown in the 23 schools that had an increase from the 23, 24 Accountability Index, we had 13 of them? No, we had 10. Two, four, six. Eight, eight of the 13 schools had increases in their performance, which is again, a huge, huge shout out to them. They may not have exited turnaround, however, the work that they done is showing continuous improvement in tier-one instruction. All right, next slide.
So in this slide, it talks, it, it, it kind of showcases the campuses that are still working towards making sure they hit to that green marker, right? And so I think it's important to, to look at some of these schools. You have one, two, three, four of those schools that are currently turnaround schools that we have to make sure that a laser focus, you know, support is given to those schools in order for them to, to move the needle. Again, some of these schools that are not turnaround schools, there have been some declines in some of the areas as well. And Ma, do you want to add anything else to that?
Yes, I just want to note that for all of our schools, we are doing a deeper dive and looking at all of their indicators, and then sitting with the principals and reviewing, reviewing it with them so they know exactly where, where there's areas that they can pick up. All right, next slide.
And this, this, as we go into the district operating goals, I shared the goals with Board Chair. And as, as the board starts looking at academic goals to, to hold the district and hold the Superintendent accountable for, accountable for, these are the things that we have to show. Next slide. That, that's it. It, it talks about a baseline, which is this year's baseline. The data that I gave the, the board was last year's baseline, but technically, this is the baseline that we will be starting. So every year, you should see a progress and the increase for measurable ways and measurable timelines as we move throughout the next couple of years in the areas of ELA, math, and this ELA and math, that's usually the focal areas that we have to kind of concentrate on. So you'll see next year's, for this upcoming accountability cycle, 57% in, for the ELA goal, an ELA high needs goal is, is 56.4%. And then the math goals is 61.7%. And high needs goal is 61.1%. Again, these things are just targets for the district to kind of move towards improving overall.
I wanted to add to this, if I could, that we based our ELA and math on the growth goals. So it's not based on a performance or achievement, it's based on growth. There are also indicators in there for chronic absenteeism and high school measurement as well.
And, and one of the things that's going to happen is Ma and her division are going to be providing a detailed report to the Academic Committee, to the Instructional and Support Committee, I'm sorry, with Mr. Traver's Committee in the upcoming meeting, because the data just came out, wanted to make sure that we provided in-depth perspective into the district's data. So I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the Superintendent? Mr. Medina.
Can you go back to the first slide, please, guys? When we talk about those schools that are exiting turnaround, what is, let us know, what does that mean?
Okay, there are 12 indicators that make up that Accountability Index. That very detailed report for Bridgeport, that was the overall. And if you look on slide four, Sam, if we could go to slide four. So every school has a breakout of scores that are based on these 12 indicators. The first indicator is performance for math, ELA, and science. That means achievement, how many kids are at or above grade level. And the state converts that to an index so that you can compare it across the state. Indicator number two, those are the growth indexes, and that measures the, the percentage, the average percentage of target achieved for math, ELA, and science. I'm sorry, math, ELA, and our multilingual learners in both literacy proficiency and oral proficiency. The chronic absenteeism, for us and for many of our schools, we did take a hit there, and we've got initiatives this year to remedy that for next year. The preparation and the percentage of students taking courses in the high school that are dual langu, are dual language, dual credit, AP, or two, two CTE courses, we've shown increases not only in the percentage of kids taking the courses, but also passing them as well. The other index are on track to high school graduation. So as a, as a elementary school, if I have a number in there, that means who, who left my school as an eighth grader, went on to high school, and were they successful in high school? And they use that percentage to reflect on the elementary side. The four-year graduation rate, that speaks for itself for the high schools. The post-secondary entrance, these are the number of graduating class from the class of 2021 that actually went on to secondary education and/or career paths, pathways. Then you've got your physical fitness and your art access. And those, that summation of scores gives you what the state refers to as their Accountability Index. And it's basically the report card that they're measuring. That's how they measure schools. And then you get either a category one, two, three, four, and a five is our schools that have been in turnaround status for many, for several years, like two or three years.
So with the turnaround status, as I learned over the years, you know, they were getting extra assistance, they were getting extra, I don't know if it was through staff or funding and all that. So right now, all that stuff gets retracted? That's what I want to find out, what's happening with our schools?
That's a great, that's a great question, because what's
Question, I asked the state that question. I asked the state that question. Historically, once you were in a cohort, you may, so for instance, we just, this year is our first year cohort, not our first year, it's, it's a new, brand-new cohort for our school improvement grants. Historically, if you got out of turnaround, you still were able to participate in the cohort for the next four years. Based on my discussions with the state, they were not able to confirm that because what they needed to do was take a look at what their allocation from the feds would be before they could make any commitment to continuing on those funds, unfortunately.
And so what we're doing, we're monitoring that because that is going to be, I feel, a huge blow to those individual campuses because they just got off, yes, but they also were depending on those, those, those services and support financially to help them, you know, achieve that. to help them, you know, achieve that, that status. So if, if they're going to not have that support, then we're going to have to really monitor.
Do you want to clarify that they're keeping the SIG grant for this year? They're not going to take it away for next year, this year rather, this year. They have the funds for this year. And we're cautiously optimistic that it'll stay in place.
We're going to be, we're going to be monitoring that because I think that you make a great fact and a great question. And we've asked the same question, but we need to make sure that we are willing to monitor that. So thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Can you go back to that slide, please, again? Okay, no problem. I'm sorry. So I know, I'll continue, I said they, they do that. I know now Harding was on that and now they turned into a focus, and then Basset was exiting the grad rates.
They're still on for the academic portion of their, of the turnaround, but they exited the graduation rate.
And then Edison, as I remember taking my notes, Edison folk is focused to turnaround?
Edison, Edison this year had tremendous double-digit growth in ELA and math. Unfortunately, their work with their multilingual learners declined significantly, and their physical education numbers declined. So those are two very, Dr. Alexander's going to continue working on the school improvement with a particular focus on the multilingual learners and the physical ed.
What does that mean, focused to turnaround?
It means-
Can you go back to the second?
And the school, the-
Second, number two, I think that's where I got it from.
So-
Yeah, it says focused to turnaround.
So you've got comprehensive support schools, those are the, the schools that are full-blown, everybody needs support, ELA, math, across the board. The focus schools, so for instance, with Harding, Harding is a folk, Harding dropped to, from a full-blown turnaround where everyone needs support, to a focused school for their high needs population in ELA, math, and science. High needs being defined as free and reduced lunch, students with, with disabilities, and multilingual learners. So they've got to focus on that subgroup of students. Edison, on the other hand, went from a math focus in the prior year to a full-blown turnaround status.
So it's, so a focused school, you can kind of, you know, think of it as a school that, that we're watching, or the state's watching, for, for one of the indicators or not. The turnaround schools is a full-fledged, you know, turnaround where state is involved in the day-to-day of those schools.
Now Madison was a focused school, and BMA is a focused school.
Right, so they just watch those schools because they could go either way. They can improve, or they can slip down and, and become a turnaround school. And that's why so, so important. So as we, as we look at all of our schools and what's happening, we have to make sure that we're giving the, every single school in our district the opportunity to, to teach at the tier one level, where everybody's getting the same kind of curriculum, and it bends on how the leaderships in those schools support their campuses, and the district supports those campuses as well. So it's just a, it's a team effort. And we, we can't lose our, lose sight of who needs support where they need it, in depending, in different area. Because some, some, some campuses are more, are more focused on their multilingual learners because they have a higher population. Some have more special ed, right? So we have to focus on making sure that those, then you have some that don't have all, any of those. So we have to blend those, that, that support based on where they fall within the accountability index. So great, great question.
Thank you. I'll raise a follow-up with, with instruction and support with Rob Travers thing to try to get more information on, on this.
Yeah, the primary focus with our turnaround schools is really ensuring that their tier one instruction is solid, meaning they're using the rigorous curriculum, they're using the district resources that are aligned with the curriculum. They're doing small group instructions based on looking at student work, having that inform their instruction and working with kids to make sure they continue to grow.
Any other questions?
Saying none, I, I got a couple of questions. Could you, Mr. Medina touched on in the beginning, the finances. What happens when a school goes into turnaround status? What was the initial thing?
What happens?
Yeah.
So internally or externally?
Basically, what external forces come in to help, once we're identified as a turnaround school?
The, as a turnaround school, they're, they are available for school improvement grants. Three times a year, the state will meet with the school to go over their grant, their school improvement grant plan. One time during the year, they'll come in and do a walkthrough. The crux of the work is done internally. With last year, when I was executive director of school turnaround, I was doing bi-weekly meetings and then alternating strategy meetings with the school, really working with the, doing walkthroughs, looking at classrooms, and, and improving tier one instruction.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question about your expertise with this, on a state level in this cap, yeah, in this-
Say that again?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question about your expertise in the state level, you've been around with school. How many districts as schools receive school turnaround additional funding that don't approve?
Well, to give you a context, this year there were 13 out of 72 turnaround schools, 13 schools exited the status. We had four of them.
And, and, but all the other schools, did they show growth?
I have not studied the other districts at that level. I would assume that historically, when one district, you know, the, districts usually go the same direction. So if every, if everybody has increases, however, when they do the calculation to get out, it's a three-year weighted average. So it's not just one year's performance, it's performance over the past three years.
So we, we could say there's some correlation to additional funding and performance?
Absolutely.
And, and that's important because I'm looking at the list over here, and I was on my phone, just full disclosure, I was on my phone researching for board, for board data. You look, you look at our sister cities, Waterbury, New Haven, Bridgeport, and New Britain. I'm going to ignore Hartford because they got a peculiar funding strategy. All these schools get under $20,000 per pupil in funding. Now these higher-performing schools that we see in the newspaper, all these schools are great, they're awesome. You're looking at Greenwich and Westport, more power to them, but they are funded at $25,000 and $27,000 per pupil. And although our students are more than test scores, test scores are basically driven, and performance is driven by what you put into it, what you have, the invest-
Absolutely. And I will tell you that Waterbury and New Haven, they have coaches, as does New Britain. We're the only district, I would say we're the only large district in, in, in our state that we do not have coaches. We have directors who are doing is covering, we have what, over 1,100 classrooms, covering as many classrooms, providing support as we can. So it's, you know, I'm proud of the fact that our district has been able to maintain, I mean, it's not great being fifth from the bottom, however, we've been able to maintain it. Without Hartford has coaches, New Haven, Waterbury, they all have coaches in place. We do not.
Right, that being said, often said is, money's not always the solution, but it's a big part of it. However, if you look at the schools below us, with the exception of New Britain, they all receive slightly more per funding pupil. That means our students and our staff are resilient. They do more than with less, and they could overcome the adversities. Not saying that they should have to. I mean, I'm highly insulted that our kids are going to suffer and struggle for every single little thing they get and have to fight for basically scraps. But with what we're doing, we're doing an awesome job. Our students rise above and our staff rise above. And I thank each and every one of them for persevering through these troubling times of-
Mr. Kalovic, imagine what we could do if we did get funding for coaches.
Absolutely.
Now, Marge, that stat again about the number of schools that are, that got off of? Give me that number again. I want, I want everybody to hear what you just said.
There, of 72 turnaround status schools, 13 schools came off turnaround status. Four were ours.
Four, four out of the 13?
Bridgeport Public Schools. The closest district to us was New Britain, and they had two come off the list.
So that, that tells you that with the staff, the administration, my executive staff, Marge was, is a huge part of that, you know, because she was the executive director for turnaround. Last year, we stayed focused, we did what we need to do, you know, and just think, if we had the additional resources, we could do so much more. So again, I think it's important that, you know, the data is here, but we're not stopping there. We have much, much more to do for kids. And so that's the goal, that's what we've been talking about, and we're going to set the bar high. So, you know, my executive directors, where are you? One's there, one's out sick. And so is keep, keep focused, let's work with the principals and the staff at, at campus level and just make it happen.
And I want to give a shout out to the turnaround schools, although they didn't exit turnaround status, there were nine of them that did show increases over last year, so they're on their way.
And really final point I'm going to make, it's really a disincentive to try to exit because those supports may go away.
Don't say that.
I, I mean, I mean, if you do good, we're going to take money from you. If you do bad, we're going to-
We do, if we do good, our kids do good.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree, but, um.
We need those supports.
We're good, we're going to make it work.
Awesome. Mr. Benhead?
Thank you, Mr. Wester. Don't leave me against that, say thank you. Thank you for the, the team, thank you for the cabinet. Because we show the whole Connecticut, we show the whole Hartford, that you say we, we need people, we need coaches. So we show them, just because we don't have them, they don't give it to us, the way it was of us to be. We show them we can do it. We're not going to give up, you know? They know we, we, how far we go, but they can, they know we're not going to give up on this for the children. We show them that whatever they, they say, and they try to add things, you know, give them more work to you guys, that you guys do the job.
Well, and our administrators, our principals.
Yeah.
Those principals that came off of the turnaround list, in addition to others that have shown increases, they are instructional leaders, and they've worked incredibly hard. And I've been working with them for the five years of the state, and now the one year, my one year here last year. They've worked incredibly hard and deserve a tremendous amount of credit.
We know that nothing is easy. I know you guys going through a lot of things, you know, all of us. Because as always, I say, together we can make the difference. And that's what we hear for, be sure our children's staff, parent, they are, you know, we see what they, you know, they're supposed to. So we show them the whole Connecticut, especially the state, you know, what we doing, and we're not going to give up for this. But thank you for all the cabinet, and thank you that they're in your team. And all, both members, so because together, that's what we say, we can do the difference. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. I see no more hands. Last call for questions on the superintendent. Seeing none, we will move on to new business, as there is no unfinished business. Like I read, you got something? I'm sorry. And okay, new business approval, the agreement between Bridgeport Public Schools and the Carver to carry out activities associated with the Classical Studies Magnet Academy's Upper School Extended School Hours Program.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? My name is Hannah Whitley. I'm the deputy grants director for Bridgeport Public Schools, representing Principal Cunningham, Classical Studies Magnet Academy this evening. So you have before you a contract agreement between Bridgeport Public Schools and the Carver. And Principal Cunningham has provided you the statement he asked me to read this evening. He said, "Since 2018, Classical Studies Magnet Academy has partnered with the Carver Foundation to provide a meaningful, robust, engaging, and successful after-school program. The proposed program before you would run for four days per week, with two days dedicated specifically to ELA intervention and two days focused on math support. In addition, students would have a wide range of enrichment opportunities, including art, music, robotics, and cooking. Upper grade students would participate as mentors in the program, allowing them to give back to the school community. And there'd be significant time for parent engagement with math nights, literacy nights, and project celebrations. Classical Studies anticipates about 100 students being served through this program with the school year, and they plan to begin services as soon as approval is received by the board."
Mrs. Kalovic?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between BPS and the Carver to carry out activities associated with Classical Studies Magnet Academy Upper School and extended hours.
I will second it. Uh, any further discussion? Yeah, I just have one comment. This has been thoroughly vetted in committee and seemed like there was a lot of support. And we're not just rubber-stamping anything, just so the community knows. In case you did not watch the committee meeting, this was discussed for like 20, 30 minutes at least, at length, so. There's nothing else? All in favor? I, pose?
Hi.
Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is approval of the agreement between Bridgeport Public Schools and Mission Connecticut. No Mission CIT LLC for EMT training course at Bridgeport Military Academy.
Good evening, board members and superintendent, and executive staff, and the audience. Bridgeport Military Academy, one of its themes is first responders. We've been running an EMT certification program since third year, so this is the 10th year of the program. We've been using Mission CIT for the last three years. This is funded by, because Bridgeport Military Academy is a focus school. We're using our school improvement grant to fund this, it's not being funded through district money, to fund an instructor, which also includes certification and testing for our students. The partnership we have with Mission CT, this is our, as I said before, it's our third year. They bring an instructor along with one of our teachers, and the students go through a one-year-long course, both semesters to complete the requirement and take a national EMT course. Long-term goal, because this is expensive, and hopefully we'll be exiting also soon, is to have one of our staff certified as an EMT instructor, but that takes, that takes a little bit of time. But that could save the district or SIG grant money several thousand dollars.
Mr. Medina? I would like to make a motion to approve their agreement between Bridgeport Public Schools and Mission CIT LLC for EMT training course at Bridge, our very own Bridgeport Military Academy.
Any que, any questions? And then, you said expensive, how much?
It's $27,900 a year. It was, went up $900 from last year to this year. I also, because they're not certified teachers, I also have a certified teacher in the classroom with them. My goal is I'm hiring a new naval science instructor who is a former Navy corpsman, who's interested in becoming an EMT and EMT instructor. We would, because of the way the Navy contract works, we could be teaching a fourth course, and that would be this course, it'd be additional stipend for him, but it would be a fraction, maybe 30% of what we're paying this organization. And also I'd be freeing up a teacher to teach another course. So ideally, this is something I've been trying to, to finagle, and it's a large commitment for my staff because it's over, it's, uh, the whole, it's, I don't know, it's me, go back to the numbers. It's over 300 hours of instruction and then many hours of ride time to make that work. So it's going to be a commitment on the new staff member to take that on. But I'm trying to get that set up to save the district money in the long run. And I'm hoping to exit the focus school next year or the year after.
And another question I probably should ask this at the committee. How many students have went through the EMT training?
It's about 12 per year.
12 per year. Do we know how many guys, how many actually passed the certifications or?
We have passed it by 80%. A lot of students don't, a lot of students do not get the right time necessary to complete the certification. It, that, that is a lot of time. So they, they can do it and have done it, and some of them have joined the fire department, both here and in the surrounding cities.
This is going to sound strange coming from me, but that doesn't sound expensive to me. You get, you divide eight per year by, what was it, 30,000? It's peanuts, these kids got careers out of this, coming out of high school.
The, the, one of the things that we did some research and we're using it for our recruitment is that an EMT right after, who's initially certified, is bringing about $56,000. After several years, it can rise up if they become a firefighter and do that after four years on the force, the average salary is over $100,000 because of the way that the schedule works. So as some way we can bring our students up, up, up above the pottery level and into the middle class with no college.
Awesome, 100% approve.
I think I, I want to kind of emphasize, one of the things that Mr. Liff is doing, and have we, have been in conversation regarding- I think I want to kind of emphasize, one of the things that Mr. Lip is doing and have we have been in conversation regarding, you know, magnet status for very academy, the possible net change. So one of the things that he's trying to add value to what brings to the table for the children at Bridgeport Military Academy, the magnet status will be a huge piece because there's money tied to that. But again, really trying to make sure we find a permanent home for that campus as we look at expanding and doing the work there. So we're in those initial initial conversations. We're just a matter of just, you know, trying to make sure the timing is correct to be able to do things with it. And so just to to let you guys know that we we we've had preliminary conversation, but we have not bring in part any form of a proposal to the board at this moment. But I keep trying to hold hold him off a little bit because he wants to do more. And it's the great thing because he's all about trying to do great things for kids. A lot of his kids go to really prestigious universities and they do really, really well. And so we want to tap into that a little bit as well. And as you see, not only at this campus, we're looking at doing some additional things at the other comprehensive high schools as well in order to kind of replicate some of the great things that we're doing in this district. So I'm excited. It's just a matter of just trying to, you know, time it all out. And this is a great opportunity for us to to provide that added value. And as we look at upcoming years, having our own staff doing it, so we'll have to pay these outside agencies. And that's what he's striving to do. So I applaud him and and his efforts. Just know that, you know, I hear you and we're gonna we're gonna keep it, we're gonna keep it focused for you as well.
Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Mr. Kocet. I'm going back a little bit what that I say, Commander, I have to say thank you because the time you take BMA is a lot of change, you know, it's a lot of things and I will say thank you. First of all, thank you for your service. And I know for the day one, you do a lot of things for BMA, people they don't know exactly what you're doing. People like to appoint and say things behind scenes or in social media that we don't care about BMA. Yes, we all care about BMA because I know you're doing amazing job and, you know, the cabinet, that favor, the board members. And I know BMA is going to be more history by the way we are right now. But I would say thank you for everything and your team too, because you're not doing this by yourself. But I appreciate Commander, everything you do for BMA. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, board. That's, I have a great team. My teachers are, you know, work really hard and the students are we're becoming more and more motivated to be successful. So I appreciate the support I'm getting from the board, the superintendent and his staff.
Awesome. Last call, comments, questions, debate? Hearing none, all in favor? Any posed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carriers?
Thank you, everyone.
Final agenda item is? Say again? Adjournment, okay, I thought I missed something again. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye.